... Americans and the people of the public for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was good.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Here.
Hilbert.
Here.
Colasar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes from the regular meeting of September 11th, 2017, is submitted and prepared by the clerk to be approved.
Second. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee prior to the council meeting this evening, and again, we'll meet in two weeks, but it'll be a holiday on that Monday, so the council meeting will be on a Tuesday, October 10th. Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Colasar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have anything scheduled right at this moment, but I do want to make a comment. It was probably four months ago, maybe five months ago, I made a comment here at our council meeting that we're going to talk about sanitation, and I wanted residents to reach out, give me your opinion on what direction you'd like the city to go, and I haven't heard from anybody. But I have some legislation in there to talk about it, so we will have a meeting. I'm going to try to get to before the end of the year to try to get maybe a five-year vision on where we want to go, but I just want to reach out again to the residents if you have some ideas. My email address is at the city website, but we're going to have something in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report also and no meeting scheduled.
Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
And Emergence Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. We have 17-166 budget amendments, 17-167 job creation grant number JCG-15 Fire Dex LLC, 17-168 job creation grant number JCG-16 Echelon Independent Living Operations, 17-169 job creation grant number JCG-17 Echelon Assisted Living Operations, 17-170 agreement with Arcadia install monitoring laws at 301 South Court Street, 17-171 expenditure over $15,000 to elaborate management group, 17-172 application of TIF ordinance, adoption of TIF ordinance, revenue sharing agreement, and TIF parcels, 17-173 adopt 2017 Ohio Building Code Section 1335, 17-174 adoption of the 2017 Ohio Plumbing Code Section 1345, 17-175 net profit tax grant incentive for local businesses, 17-176 discuss treaty issues with the city sidewalk program, 17-177 establish a mandatory retirement age for the police and fire personnel, and 17-178 accepting of a warranty deed. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, September 24th, from 10:00 to 3:00 at the Medina Airport, that an event that annually, always the last Sunday in September, called Wings and Wheels, and it's a collection of classic cars and airplanes that the public can come out, there's no charge to attend, take a look at those, as well as they had the UH helicopter there for the children to get in and look at, as well as tour of the airport terminal and the hangar where they do repairs. It's very well attended, and yesterday was perfect weather, other than little shade, and was very well attended, lots of people. I'd like to publicly thank the Medina School Board for passing the TIF legislation, which was necessary for us to accept the $1 million grant from the state of Ohio that were used a couple of city dollars to build a proposed parking deck to support the municipal court, the city hall, downtown activities, as well as further development in our downtown. The city dollars are planned to be advanced and then repaid with a portion of the tax dollars of the improved parcels where the development is spurred by this new deck. TIF legislation and parcels were passed tonight by the Finance Committee and are planned to go to council on October 10th. The Fire District Advisory Committee is comprised of one trustee and three residents from both Medina Township and Montville Township, and the city representatives are city councilman Mark Colasar, who's the Chair of Health Safety, resident Gary Linden, business owner Mark Williams from Williams on the Lake, and myself. We're meeting tomorrow at 4:30, and the purpose is to start by reviewing current operations, as well as discuss need or desire for additional staffing hours a day as they relate to the call stats that we have. Once that process is reviewed and discussed, and the group has some history working together, we will then begin the process of reviewing the formation of a fire district for all three jurisdictions. And last but not least, I just wanted to announce that the State of the City presentation at the Chamber on September 5th is posted on the city website. For anybody that couldn't attend, there's a link right on there, and I'd like to thank Medina TV for taping it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, we had a budget hearing last week, we covered the courts and some other departments, and there are two more. We're taking this show on the road. Before our Ward 3 and Ward 4 meeting on October 3rd, we're going to have a budget hearing at Heritage Elementary School. So for anyone who can't get to City Hall and would like to see one of our exciting budget hearings, that's coming up then. And then there's a couple items that came from Finance I'll talk about when we get there.
Hopefully, we have enough chairs at that meeting to cover the crowd, but we'll see. Mr. Huber, City Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank Earl Olson and Eric Olson, who organized the Wings and Wheels event that took place yesterday. The maintenance supervisor, George Gilby, was on hand in the maintenance hangar and was busy all afternoon explaining what goes on with respect to maintenance at the airport. This was a great, good time. Lots of people came out, appreciated all the support that everyone gave to this show.
Thank you. Lieutenant Burbeck, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items. On Friday, September 22nd, the city of Medina, along with the Chamber, Medina County Economic Development and Main Street Medina, celebrated a few ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking celebrations. We welcomed Green Biologics to the city of Medina at 803 East Washington Street. It's a sales and marketing office for their product, their manufacturing plant's actually in Minneapolis, Minnesota. And at 11 o'clock, we did the groundbreaking celebration for the Echelon Senior Living Group Independent Living Facility at 629 North Huntington Street. At 1 o'clock, we did a grand reopening, an open house for Project Learn of Medina County in the Bookshelf Store, where they actually expanded their offices to the upper floor of the building that they're in, the Williams and Bachholder Building, and then took the space where the offices were and converted it to a children's room. It was really nice. And then at 2 o'clock, the most important ribbon cutting of the day was Circles on the Square, a donut company at 28 Public Square. So for all of you that have been asking, when can we have a donut shop on the square? It's now open. And then today, we celebrated Fire Dex groundbreaking ceremony at 3 o'clock this afternoon, where they are doubling the size of their manufacturing and warehouse facility, 25,000 square feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mandal, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick, couple updates. The Medina Rec will have a Senior Day on Friday, October 20th, from 9:30 to 12:30. There'll be free health screenings, balance screenings, and flu shots, along with local vendors, refreshments, and raffles. And then the next Rec Advisory Committee meeting is Thursday, November 16th, at 7:30, as our October meeting is canceled. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worley Parks, Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to extend a thank you to the volunteers from Robbie's Recovery Center. The last two weekends, they assisted the Parks Department with a service project over at Ray Mallard Park. They spread mulch, painted our swing set, and pulled weeds, and did a variety of things to spruce that up, and we're planning future projects for the Recovery Center as well. So partnerships going well, and look forward to more improvements. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gladish, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you. This morning and last week, we had two culvert projects, the bridge replacements that started. One on North Harmony that was started last week, and this morning was West Smith between Huntington and Prospect. In both cases, those streets have to be closed for approximately 90 days to allow for the replacement. In both cases, there's both a local detour set up, as well as a truck detour. Appreciate everyone's cooperation. I know they'll try and get those roads reopened as quickly as they can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCray, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. We received numerous calls with people interested in leaf program already, believe it or not. So we'll start the vacuuming of leaves when the piles are adequate enough for us to send the equipment out and make it worthwhile. So typically, that's about the third week of October, but to be honest with you, what we're seeing, the leaves falling a little earlier, it'd probably be before that. So we'll have an update on the website and information relative to the same. So in the meantime, the yard waste program is still going forward, so folks, we've been seeing leaves in the yard waste containers. The truck goes out every day with the garbage routes, so folks can still utilize that aspect until the program's up and running to its full capacity. So the yard waste program, my met with the supervisors today, we'll run that through the Thanksgiving holiday and probably end at December 1st. So again, there'll be an update with regard to these programs on the website, most likely by tomorrow. So thank you.
Thank you. We have one confirmation of mayor's appointment. We have the Cemetery Commission, Gregory Walter, for a term expiring 12/31/18.
Move to confirm the mayor's appointment.
Second. Any discussion on the mayor's appointment? Mr. Walter's here today and back. Welcome.
Okay, we know that.
Anybody have any other questions, discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the mayor's appointment?
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Congratulations. Noticees, Communications, and Peticions, we have none, and from this business, there's none introduction to visitors. Members of the public, we are permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front, right microphone, and state their name and address so it can be added into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting, as determined by the chair, or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? We have one, Richard Doyle, who's an artist, who's going to be gifting a 2009 painting to Medina, Ohio, to the city, and I think it's up front here, and I think, I don't know if Bill and...
Mr. Doyle.
Have you come up to the front here? Bill and Jim. I guess we could hold, he got a microphone, if you want to, he can explain a little bit about the painting, would be awesome.
First mayor? Yeah. Good to see you. Who's explaining? You want us to hold it up? Yeah, okay. Actually, this brings back a lot of memories. This was my first job, was a 15-year-old, I worked for the Parks and Rec. I was a substitute art and crafts teacher. Remember that? And then worked the teen canteen, and Bill was our first mayor for me, and then, what's that? Of course. And then Jim's been a long, longtime friend of the family and stuff, so I asked that both you'd be up here. Local artist, sort of carved out my niche doing collages, and this one in particular is one of my favorites. It's of Medina. Really, sold about 400 prints of this, so it's been a real popular one, and it got us through some tough times, I was starting my own firm and so on. So has a lot of special meaning to me. Medina has a lot of special meaning to me, grew up here, and it's just a great honor for me to be able to donate this. I just could not envision it being sold to someone and not being held, you know, displayed where people could enjoy it. So I'm thankful for Kathy and Shelley Johnson, who got the ball rolling for us and so on, but it's just an honor for me to be able to donate this. Hopefully, then, you know, people can enjoy it for years and years and years to come. So I just want to say thank you, and it's a pleasure for me to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause).
We'll try to find a good wall here to hang it on, so it can be displayed prominently, so everybody who comes to City Hall will be able to see it. Work with the mayor, I guess, and maybe Mr. McCray to do that. Thank you.
Can I embarrass Rich for a minute before he leaves? I do want to thank you, Rich. He is truly a Medina guy. He grew up in the Heritage neighborhood, went to Medina Junior High, graduated Medina High School, member of the most successful basketball team in Medina history, and just a smart guy, good guy, great athlete, and obviously, a great artist also. So thank you for thinking of Medina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Introduction and considerations of... Oh, let me ask that question. Is anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? It's a great opportunity. Okay.
See people rushing up here.
Introduction and consideration of ordinances, resolutions. I'm going to go down and read a resolution, and then we'll have a motion after I present it. This is Resolution 136-17, and I ask Stephanie Mueller to come up front here, and I'd go over the resolution. Stephanie, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm going to read the resolution that we prepared, and then we'll adopt it and present it with you, so you can take it with you. Okay, this is Resolution 136-17, it's a resolution recognizing the month of September as the National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, whereas men with relatives, father, brother, son, with a history of prostate cancer are twice as likely to develop the disease, and whereas veterans are one and a half times more likely to get prostate cancer, and whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer in American men, and the third leading cause of cancer death behind lung and colon cancer, and whereas this year approximately 161,360 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone every year. That's one man every 3.3 minutes, and roughly 26,730 will die this year from the disease, which is one man every 20 minutes. And whereas one in eight men are diagnosed with prostate cancer, African-American men are at the highest risk for the disease at a rate of one in six men, African-American men are 2.3 times more likely to die from the disease. And whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies are critical to saving lives and preserving the... Project families, what is that?
Projecting.
Oh, particular. There's a face missing there, that's a weird word. I'm sorry about that. Whereas all men are at risk for prostate cancer, and we encourage the citizens of Medina to increase the importance of prostate screenings. Now therefore, be resolved by the City of Council, the City of Medina, Ohio, one that the city of Medina hereby proclaims September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Medina, and calls upon our citizens to join in a coordinated community effort to help spread awareness of the importance of prostate cancer screenings, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect as the earliest period allowed by law. Congratulations for the Prostate Cancer Month, and if you have anything to say or add to that, because that was tough for me to talk about that.
I'm not sure what else I should add to that, but I appreciate the city supporting Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. We encourage all men to get tested. Early detection really can save lives, and we're just here to support that cause.
Appreciate that. There's a lot of old men, but men here that probably should get some screening done, I don't know if it's when or where, but they should go get it done this month. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 136-17.
Second. Any further discussion on that motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Resolution 136-17 passes 7-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause).
John should have been an entertainer.
Ordinance 137-17, an ordinance adopting the amended agreement with the city of Brunswick for reciprocal backup chief building official services.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause been requested, I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause? Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Gladish.
This ordinance allows us to continue the reciprocal agreement for backup chief building official services with the city of Brunswick. Emergency clause is requested because the existing five-year agreement expired on September 11th. The original agreement started in 2012 and expired this year, 2017. In 2014, there was an amendment to the agreement that I mistakenly thought restarted the five-year timeframe.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on that? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 137-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 138-17, ordinance amendment ordinance number 167-16 passed December 12th, 2016, amendments to the 2017 budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's four items here. The first one is for Christmas lights. That is an appropriation of electrical aggregation funds, so that's a new appropriation. The second is appropriation of funds that came to us through a refund. The third is appropriation of funds that came to us through a donation. And then finally, the paver sales for the bicentennial park. This is for the costs that are involved in that. We are selling the bricks, but then we have to pay for the bricks and the engraving and the installation.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
No.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 138-17 passes 6A's one name.
Ordinance 139-17, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a revocable use permit to use or occupy a part of the city right-of-way with Decorative Black Landscaping Law located at 260 South Court Street.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. We became aware that the property on our 260 South Court Street, which was the address for Castle Noel, was installing some landscaping blocks on their property. In one location, that block butted the sidewalk, came right up against the sidewalk. That's actually city right-of-way, out about 18 inches beyond the sidewalk is city right-of-way. So for an order, in order for us to allow that to stay, council has to issue him a revocable use permit.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
No.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 139-17 passes 6A's one name.
Ordinance 140-17, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement, amendment number nine, to the agreement with Delta Airport Consultants, Inc., for modification of the project plans and specifications, and rebidding for the north-south taxiway reconstruction project at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Huber.
Thank you, Mr. President. We received a grant from the state of Ohio for reconstructing the north-south taxiway which runs parallel to the north-south runway. It's in bad condition. We bid this project, and the bids came in more than 10% over the engineer's estimate, which means we have to reconfigure the project. Our engineers, Delta Consultants, did in fact help us modify the, and cut down the scope of the project. We're going to hope to rebid it and get bids that are within the requirements for the law and are within 10% of our engineer's estimate, so that we can hopefully get this project underway.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of ordinance?
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 140-17 passes 7-0.
Resolution 141-17, a resolution supporting and accepting the Friends of the Cemetery's Spring Grove Cemetery Material Storage Shed Project.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Friends of the Cemetery would like to construct a material storage shed at Spring Grove that will cover our bulk materials storage area. We'll also clean up the area adjacent to our maintenance building. The Friends have engaged an architectural firm to design and are hoping to build the structure and then gift it to the city. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Friends of the Cemetery for their continued contributions, and also note that over the years, they have donated approximately $1.1 million in improvements at Spring Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo what Mr. Worley said. The Friends of the Cemetery has been an organization that has taken Spring Grove Cemetery under their wings with their organization. It's a not-for-profit organization that has, as Mr. Worley said, has donated over $1 million
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo what Mr. Worley said. The Friends of the Cemetery has been an organization that has taken Spring Grove Cemetery under their wings with their organization. It's a not-for-profit organization that has, as Mr. Worley said, has donated over $1 million to the city. This came up to finance about a month ago, and there was some misunderstanding between the city and the Friends on the amount of money that was due to the city from the Friends with the maintenance building and the Amos Mirrors building. That has been resolved, and again, as I said then, it was a misunderstanding. Spring Grove Cemetery, as the architect for the building that's going to be constructed with the Friends' money, has traveled the state and surrounding states and presented a letter to Tricia Merkel, the president of the, or chairperson of the Friends of the Cemetery, that stated that, you know, out of all his travels, Spring Grove Cemetery is the nicest cap, nicest-designed cemetery that he has witnessed. So again, I'd just like to thank the Friends. I've been on the Cemetery Committee that works with the Friends of the Cemetery for the last 13 years, and it's been a real honor to do that. And sir, I welcome you on board. I think you're going to enjoy your time, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the role on adoption of the resolution.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Resolution 141-17 passes 7-0.
Resolution 142-17. A resolution in support of the Ohio Department of Transportation's speed evaluation study for the State Route 18.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mayor Hamel?
Mr. President, the State of Ohio is in the process of continuing the widening of State Route 18 from where it currently is at Nettleton to Alba Drive in the city. The project in the city will not substantially widen anything within the city, because we didn't want to adversely impact the hospital operations. However, because of it being the project coming into the city, what ODOT generally does then is study the speeds posted adjacent to it. In our case, 18 from Spring Grove to the city limits, and then they extended it again from South Jefferson Street to Spring Grove. And what they found was, when they did their analysis, that both sections should be posted 35, according to the state law, and journalized at 35 versus the current posting of 25. That causes two difficulties for us. One is for the project to continue into the city for the section from Alba Drive to the city limits. We have to agree to do that, but probably more problematic is the fact that their speed study said that the appropriate speed is 35 versus 25. For our officers to attest on a citation that it's unreasonable to go in excess of 25 would not be proper after this analysis by the State of Ohio. So we have very little method to do anything other than raise it to 35 or to cite anybody from exceeding the 25 mile per hour speed limit as a result of this study. I ask council to pass this resolution in support of it.
Thank you. Any further comments on the resolution?
Mr. President?
Mr. Colzare?
Real brief. I wasn't at the last finance meeting that we discussed this, and I understand where the state's coming from. It sounds like it's mandatory up to Spring Grove. I am still struggling with, because there's a recommendation from Spring Grove to South Jefferson. There wasn't an actual study done that, I'm still struggling with that section to be 35 as well. So I'll be voting no on it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other additional comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes. I do. Thank you. I voted for this in Finance Committee, but I reconsidered. This is my protest vote, because it makes no difference whatsoever, because we're going to get what we get from the state regardless. I have talked to no one that lives on a state route in a house, no resident on a state route, who does not want their speed limit to be 25 miles an hour, and the speed limit is 35 miles an hour. And this is just a continuation of that policy that, to me, makes no sense whatsoever. I live on a state route, and when the speed limit is 35, people can go 40. And if you look at how long it takes you to stop, if you're going 25 miles an hour and someone's crossing the street, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but what I looked up is if you're going 25 miles an hour, it takes 56 feet to stop. If you're going 35 miles an hour, it takes 95 feet to stop. And if you can go 35 miles an hour, but you can really go 40 in a 35 mile an hour zone, then it takes 119 feet to stop. And people that live on state routes in houses, they have the same, they have children, just like people that live in neighborhoods that aren't state routes, and they want to cross the street just like people that live on streets that are not state routes. And so this is not a city issue, but this is a state-mandated issue that, to me, it defies logic, because we do it, because if we don't do it, we won't get state funding. And as the mayor correctly pointed out, if we don't do it, then police officers who would cite somebody for going over a 25 mile an hour speed limit really wouldn't hold up in court. But having lived on a state route and watched the traffic go by, we have, there are two things, I think, that affected, that didn't affect it so much 30 years ago. And one is the volume of traffic has increased so significantly that when you add the volume of traffic to the speed of 40 miles an hour, you create a situation that, in my mind, is, number one, not too, not safe, and number two, it's not conducive to the livability on those streets. And why you would have a 25 mile an hour speed limit on a state route in a commercial district, but have a 35 mile an hour speed limit in a residential district on a state route, just defies logic to me. So I'll vote no, because it doesn't make any difference. We're going to have to do it anyway. But I can't vote yes for this.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
This is just, in my opinion, another move by the state to whittle away at the things that the city can control. We talked in Finance about being able to control the intake of our own taxes. The state's trying to take that away from us. Now they're telling, trying to tell us what we can do with our speed limits. I'm voting no, too.
Oh. Mr. Simpson?
Yes, sir. I respect all three of you for your no votes. I think the city is going to have to adopt this, or again, we'll lose funding. I think the more appropriate, for me, I will vote yes for it, but I will contact my state legislature and ask that they reconsider this, not only from Medina, but statewide, where state routes, you know, go through residential neighborhoods. I mean, I agree with each one of you and your comments. For me, this venue isn't the proper place. I'll contact my state legislatures, but I will, I will vote yes for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mayor Hamel, I'll just say it correctly. I thought we talked to you Finance. I mean, this was a state funding issue, too, about we have to have it at 35 in order for us to continue with the project.
The portion of the project within the city, that's correct. So the state funding is one issue, but the other is the enforcement issue. I mean, how do you say it's unsafe if the state's saying it is safe? We're stuck. Now, if I may, I don't want to prolong it, but just, we have competing interests here. The interest of the State of Ohio is to move more traffic expeditiously and safely. Expeditiously, in this case, being the key word. Whereas, from Bill and Mark's perspective, which I respect and understand, and actually recommended, because I didn't know you had to go through this graph and analysis, I thought, we look, and it's a mix of businesses and residents, let's call it commercial. And apparently, their analysis does not permit us to do those type things even under home rule. But from the residential perspective, you're exactly right. It doesn't create a good residential neighborhood, or feel, or safety by having cars going 10 to 15 miles faster than they would be if it was in a 25 zone. But again, the state sets the standards under the uniform traffic manual, because they don't want people going from city to city and not knowing what to expect when they cross the borders. And we have no choice but to follow that, so.
Question. Any other council comments? Clerk, please call the role on adoption of the resolution.
Lamb?
No.
Rose?
No.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
No.
Resolution 142-17 passes 4 yeas, 3 nays.
Council comments. Mr. Colzare?
Mr. President, thank you. I just want to announce to the public that on Tuesday, October 3rd, at 7:00 PM, we're going to host a ward, the City of Medina is going to be hosting a Ward Three slash Ward Four meeting at Heritage Elementary, which is located at 833 Guilford Boulevard down in beautiful Ward Three. Urge all residents to come out, especially in Three and Four, but all residents in the community are welcome. This is a great opportunity for, on a casual scale, for residents to come out. You don't have to get in front of the microphone or be on camera. Come out, speak your mind, let us know what we're doing right, what we're not, things that you might want us to address, things of that nature. There'll be department heads there to talk as well. So if there's any mystery questions you have out there, hopefully, we'll be able to answer them for you. So again, that is Tuesday, October 3rd, 7:00 PM, Heritage Elementary, 833 Guilford Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hilberg?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to expand a little bit on some comments that Mr. Worley made regarding the volunteer work at Ray Mallett Park. September was National Recovery Month, and Robbie's celebrated this month with service projects. In addition to the projects they did at the park, they also partnered with Tom Cromer from our billing department. We have an elderly female over on Washington Street that needed some work done. They stepped up and completed most of the work. There's still some work to be done over there, but there's, most of it's done. They also held at least two trash nights that I know of. There may have been a third one, where volunteers from Robbie's went out, and thanks to the service department who loaned them the trash picker-upper things, or whatever they're called, and trash bags, and they went out and picked up trash in neighborhoods